Mayor Pro Tem Tom Gibb. We have Ed Pinalto, Ramon Reed, and Jared Garrison. So at this time, we will stand and we will pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, I would like to throw out an addition here on this on this meeting. This is the Board of Trustees Town Meeting. And I would like to practice a little more decorum here this evening than we have seen in the past. And so if you feel the need to visit with your neighbor, why please just take that outside. We will be taking public comments. Not from the seat, but you may raise your hand and we'll acknowledge you at the appropriate time. So, thank you. Let's try and hold this down. All right. Public comments.
It looks like Chuck Polinski. Okay, no comment.
I'm sorry, I didn't have this on. Okay, so our public comment period is over. We have a town attorney's report. And we have no town attorney tonight. So we will move on with the approved meeting minutes. And so this is August regular meeting minutes. How many of you, how many of you got to read through those? Any comments on the August regular meeting minutes?
A couple of typos that Sarah took care of. You have them next.
A couple of typos we've taken care of. Anything else?
Yeah, a couple. The first one I have is on page five. The second paragraph under eight dash five. The hotel owner Bob Taylor stated that three right at the front, at the front right corner. I think it says that is at the front right corner.
Thank you, I'll fix that.
Maybe it's on one of the other, and that's all I see on this one.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so at this point, I would entertain a motion to approve the August nineteen twenty twenty four minutes. As corrected for punctuation and wording.
This is Ed Pinalto, I shall move.
Do I have a motion?
Jera. My second.
So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye. My aye. Motion carries. So the, excuse me. So the next minutes are the June twenty four special meeting minutes. Any comments on that?
I have no changes on it.
I don't have any changes on that.
Everybody happy? Okay then, I would entertain a motion to approve the special meeting minutes for June twenty four.
This is Jera and I shall move.
This is Ed, I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And one more. So we have the June twenty four work session.
Couple on the, on the first page. And number two, this is for discussion. Does clerk Sarah Gibb read the ordinance aloud? Not clear what those, what we proposed or anything.
I'll fix that.
On the second page. The second paragraph starts with Mayor Pro Tem. The one, two, three, fourth line. I'm not sure what it's going to say. It says that these employees are self-contained. They need to haul out every once in a while.
So that was Mayor Pro Tem Tom Gibb, if I was correctly, he was talking about an RV that is doing docking essentially, providing its own water and sewer. He took these occasionally to empty out tanks that become full, but Mayor Pro Tem Gibb would probably have a better idea of what he meant. I believe that that was probably the conversation at that time.
Maybe should read if the employees campers or RVs are self-contained.
Sure, would that be an appropriate clarification?
I'd be fine with that.
Okay, so what are we correcting that to?
Well, I'm just gonna add the word RVs and it was saying if these employees, these
These employees are RVs.
They need to fall out every
I just didn't wasn't able to follow.
Yes.
Oh, and on the very last page. It says, no July meeting. Said there will be no July meeting.
So you want, Sarah will be in front of now? Yeah.
That was probably me up to myself, but I didn't. Thanks very well.
Thank you.
Sarah, you have anything?
Nope.
Ed, do you have anything?
Nope.
All right then. At this time, I would entertain a motion to approve with changes the June twenty fourth Town Pick and Work Session.
This is Ramon, I'll move that.
This is Ed, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion carries. So item nine dash two says approve. I'm sorry, review treasurer's report. Discuss and vote to approve September twenty twenty four dispersments. Will be the first thing. And then also to discuss and vote to transfer funds from the checking account to C-Safe. And as we look at the treasurer's report, we will see that we're getting a little heavy there in our checking account maybe.
We have one addition to the treasurer's report. I did send it out, but it was quite late this evening. So that was for the PHCA for the purchasing of Zoom package and then also for monthly Zoom fees for whenever it was added, I think December through August. The total of one thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and twelve cents.
May I ask a question? Did we, is that all right?
Yes ma'am.
Did we ever receive an invoice from the PHCA regarding the installation of Starnum? I think you told me, you were waiting on it.
That's, that's what this is.
That's what this is?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Did you send that out this afternoon, Sarah?
Okay, so you can just add that on if you didn't get it.
Eleven.
That is when I probably when I generated.
I don't see it in there.
Yeah, oh yeah, there it is.
You what? I don't see it on the email.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, well, I didn't read my computer.
Got it, okay.
I printed it, but it came in.
I see it.
Nineteen ninety-three twelve?
Yeah, if I could just read it, yeah. Yep.
So how are we then, well, this second question, never mind. Everybody happy with the treasurer's report? Are there any questions? Okay.
Got a public comment?
All right, Bob, come on up and give us a public comment.
Regarding your balance in the
Get your, get your microphone up there and hold it real close.
This is Bob, favor. Regarding your balance in checking. Luke?
Yeah.
Regarding your balance in checking account of eighty-six thousand dollars, my suggestion is you take fifty of it and you move it to the money market account.
That's question number two. That's the plan.
Okay. Nice, so I don't need to give my reasoning. Good. Well, so it looks like on average, a town takes in about eight or nine thousand a month more than it disperses. So having a cushion of about thirty thousand dollars, in my opinion, is sufficient. And it would make money, and it would make more money for the town.
Thank you, Bob. We were gonna get there.
Oh, sorry.
It's all right. We appreciate you taking a look, caring. Okay, so to discuss and vote to approve the September twenty twenty four dispersments.
Can I, I just want to make a clarifying question.
Yes.
On under Sarah's cash operating for health supplies, just to clarify, that was laptop that she purchased.
Okay, so the town is and just using Zoom.
Okay.
This is Ed, I'll move. We approve the dispersments as presented for September.
This is Jera, my second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the dispersments for September and a second. All in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. And now we're gonna move on to discuss and vote to transfer funds from the checking account to our C-Safe account. Sarah, what is that C-Safe getting right now? Do you know off the top of your head? I'm just curious. It fluctuates, I know.
It fluctuates. I don't off the top of my head.
Okay, that's all right. But it is the place where we can put our excess and we do make more interest off it than for sure than we do in our checking account. So Sarah, what is your recommendation on this?
Two percent. According to Mr. Jera's recommendation, we need to keep around twenty-five thousand in checking. So if we took out fifty and moved that over to C-Safe, that would put us at right about that amount. So that, that is my recommendation. And we are receiving five point three one percent of the average.
Okay. So if everybody's agreeable with that, I would entertain a motion to transfer, to direct our treasurer to transfer fifty thousand dollars from checking to C-Safe.
Jera and I shall move. That'll be from the Gunnison Bank and Trust.
Correct, that'll be coming out of Gunnison Banking Trust to C-Safe.
I'll second.
All right, we have a first and second. All those in favor of transferring fifty thousand from checking to C-Safe, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, item nine point three. Discuss with possible action approving a contract with Gunnison Valley excavation or snow plowing for the night, for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five winter season. Actually, that doesn't actually start at that. What, what are the dates they start and finish for that?
I think they put November twenty-fifth through March thirty-first.
Right, I've got that contract, oh god.
I spoke with June today and said that it's, plowing needs are outside that window that they're, they're happy to, to serve the town.
Okay. Any discussion on this?
Has this gone out for a request for proposal?
No.
Then we need to do an RFP.
We do not need to do an RFP, it's a single source contract. And this is amending the dates of the the contracts.
But there are others in town, like a local contractor that wants to bid on it.
I, the local contractor did not make anybody aware had the ability to negotiate with GVE that he also wanted to bid. I spoke with Clay today and he said that the town is not required to put out an RFP for services. Nor is it required to put out an RFP for a single source contract that has been continuing for several years.
May not be required, but I believe it's the right thing to do. Got time for an RFP out there?
Well, here's the thing. They've already submitted and it has been broadcast what their contract price would be.
That's why it should go up for an RFP to begin with.
Yes, but with them having done this for how many years running? And normally, past several years, our street commissioners contacted them and made arrangements and they supplied us with the contract that was agreeable and so we have gone with them. And several of those years, there have not been anybody else in the running. When we did put out an RFP. So with the input from Attorney Bookner and having this already in front of us with the contract price, it would be at a disadvantage and a disservice to now back up and do an RFP. Because suddenly you've got numbers of your competition already on the table. So I'm not in favor of that.
I'm in favor of transparency, Tom.
Again?
I'm in favor of transparency with the town folks spending the money.
Yes, Jera?
Oh. The town, I think in most of the townspeople, the town council, or say the town government, has been very happy with Gunnison Valley excavation for these years. Wonderful. I personally know, I've spoken to him many mornings or texted him at five-thirty. He's been wonderful. And I have no opposition if they would be our contractor. However, I don't know this officially, but there's a local person here that I, I thought he had contacted the town, but I this contractor in town pays local taxes and he did bail us out a few times here. In addition, I don't even know if he charged the town part of the time maybe, but I I just hate us, I hate to see us, I have no objection to this company, but I just hate to see us not like, wasn't opening up. Like we didn't open it up for bids. You would think the local person who contacted them, since they know that we do this, but I don't think we do have a lot of
Sarah, would you reiterate again what, Mr. Bookner?
So, so just, just to be clear, what has happened with Gunnison Valley excavation in, in previous years via the street commissioner and this year is that a contract is negotiated with Gunnison Valley excavation and then the contract is presented to the town for approval. And so in keeping with that practice, that is what happened this year. The attorney, I followed up because after the contract was posted and after the agenda was posted and after it was far too late to make any changes, I called the attorney to fill him in and let him know what had happened, that after everything had been posted, after the town had negotiated a contract, that another person said that they had thought about maybe bidding and wondered if it was too late. And Attorney Booker said that at this time, the town is not required to put out an RFP. This is a single source repeating contract and that the town can move forward with a contract that it has negotiated with Gunnison Valley excavation. However, if the town wants to open it up next year to an RFP, knowing now that somebody else may be interested in placing a bid, then if you do that, John and I give this information to the local contractor. He was satisfied with that answer.
And I wouldn't have any problem going with this agreement.
Any other thoughts from the board?
I think we should continue with, I think we can have good service and reasonable prices. I know that at least when we started with it, sperm, the prices were lower than anyone was expecting. And I, I don't see any reason to change at this point. If some other contractor wants to contact us in the future and talk about that, I'm not opposed to that, but, you know, I think that we should proceed with this contract for the coming winter.
But I'd like to add that I'm in agreement with Jera with Gunnison Valley excavation. They've done a good job. Have no problem with what they've done. I just firmly believe that when we're spending taxpayers' money for this amount, we need to open it up for bid and then select the best bid. Unnecessarily the lowest, but the best bid with the best service. And have some options. I know when we, when we did the ditches last year, or earlier this year, we put it out for bid. We did not take the lowest bid, we didn't take the highest. But we didn't put it out for bid and we gave people an opportunity.
Jesse Garrettson, I see you standing there waiting.
Thank you. My confusion with the previous mayor and just what Ed, you know, just said about the ditches being put out for bids. That he wanted me to get bids on everything and it comes through the board. And Mr. Deutsch from Court Street Company approached me this summer after I stepped down from street commissioner wanting to know about this coming year's snow plowing. That he was interested in wanting to make a bid. And I said, well, our board has established a bidding process and whenever they announce it, get on the front row. So I feel like we are not being consistent with the previous mayor's direction. I, I'm like Jera and Ed. I have had zero problem with you. He's been above and beyond. But I also know that Mr. Deutsch bailed us out twice last winter, at least twice that I know of. And I think we did pay him, didn't we, Sarah? I asked him, yeah, because I asked him to submit a deal. So be careful about our precedents. Thank you.
Thank you. So a confirmation here, Sarah, you said you contacted Phil and he was happy, not happy, he was
Oh, I can read you the email right now. It said, "Hi Phil, the town has negotiated to amend and continue the contract with GVE. The town, the town is treating it as a single source contract and no RFP was required. I'm sure the town would welcome your bid next year. Please let me know next summer if you'd like to bid and we can know that route." And he said, "Sounds good."
Thank you. Pete?
Peels. Refreshing, about a year and a half ago, Jesse, I and I, a couple other people were on what's called a snow plow. And there were two proposals for a snow removal policy for the town put forward. One was drafted, I think initially by the mayor and identified three levels of priority. The second proposal from the committee was a comprehensive plan which stated that the council, town council acknowledged that snow removal is an ongoing obligation of the town council to serve the residents of Pittin. And it provided that in August of each year, in August of each year, a map of the proposal out to be published. And that then residents have until the end of September to notify if they were either going to be excluded or would like to be included on that route map. That didn't happen this year, which I think is partially responsible for having the particular that you do now. So it'd be my suggestion that at a minimum in your future years, you calendar the start of preparing for snow removal much earlier than now. Thank you.
Thank you, Pete.
Jake.
Jake, go ahead.
Jake Scholberg, taxpayer in Pittkin, full-time resident. I think this is a joke. I've been watching the paper, watching the post office for the posting so that I could put a bid. This is ridiculous. Follow the procedure.
Thank you, Jake. Any other thoughts? Well, I'm going to suggest that perhaps we did get ourselves into a bit of a corner. But it is not the end of the world. And as Mr. Bookner, our attorney pointed, Mr. Bookner, our attorney pointed out, in this particular situation, while an RFP would really have been a good way to go, Mr. Bookner pointed out that it was not completely necessary. So as Mr. Deutsch was contacted and expressed a thank you for the notification, I'm going to suggest that we go ahead with approving the contract with Gunnison Valley excavation and I would entertain a motion to that effect.
This is Ramon. I'll move if we accept the snow removal agreement from Gunnison Valley Excavation and off the negative sign.
Well, so we can get to a vote, I will second that motion. So we have been moved and we are seconded. So all in favor of approving a contract with Gunnison Valley Excavation for snow plowing for the 24, 25 season, please say.
Can we have discussion?
Okay, we'll back up if you want to have some discussion.
A little. So I hope we, I hope we've learned our lesson and I definitely think we should have put it out for bids. And to tell you the truth, for so many years, we haven't had anybody that wanted to bid on it. It didn't, I mean, that there might be somebody else that wanted to. Well, I can, unless in the essence, for the essence of time, you know, it's a conundrum, but can, is there time? Well, you said we already put them, they already know what the bid is here though. I think it's a conundrum and it's our own fault as a council. I'm not happy with how this has gone, but perhaps in the essence of safety and snow removal and time, we have to do this this year and then for sure have it like on our August agenda, next day already. So that it's, we don't ever do this again.
Including our taxpayer dollars out of.
So I'd like to make an additional comment.
Okay, go ahead, Ed.
I believe we do still have time. We can put an RFP out for the next two weeks. We can bring it back to our meeting in October and vote on the contracts that we'd have for the RFP in October, the first part of October, third week of October. We don't typically, their, their contractor, Gunnison Valley Excavations contract doesn't start until November. So we put it out for an RFP and we vote on it, put it on the agenda, first thing on the agenda for October. There is time.
And is there a, what is the time limit or window when you put out, when you put out the RFPs?
I'm not quite sure what you're asking.
Don't we have to have a certain length of time that it has to be put, you don't want.
No, no, the town is not required to put out an RFP at all, so there's no requirement for a time limit.
But if we did put it out for bid, when you put it, when you put out a request for bids, I was thinking we, you know, it had to be posted for a certain amount of time. Am I wrong?
We could, it could go on Gunnison Valley or Gunnison Country Times next week or the following week. And then we ask for the contracts to come back before our October meeting.
Okay, Suzie, I'm going to let you do a comment and then we have a motion in a second, so we're going to have to vote.
I just wanted to say that since there are two local people, it seems like, who would like to do that work, then that would, I think that would kind of be nice to do that.
Thank you, Susan. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the table, so we are going to vote. So we have a motion and a second on approving a contract with Gunnison Valley Excavation for the 24, 25 season. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so we are split. So it looks like we will not be approving a contract with Gunnison Valley Excavation. So that being said, we have no snow plowing contract, so we will have to put this out again, somewhere, somehow, in the format that is workable. And as it was asked, how many days does this need to be out there? I don't know.
Can we do it immediately?
Do what?
Can we do it immediately?
Yes, we can do it immediately, but I don't, it hasn't been posted before.
I, I don't know. I was thinking, I was thinking there was a time limit, but.
Gunnison Country Times comes out Thursday.
They not get it in this Thursdays, but it can go in next Thursday.
Do you know, Sarah, how far in advance the Country Times has to be?
Tuesday at noon.
Oh, so we could in the morning.
When you say we, if you mean Sarah, I am working tomorrow morning and I will not be able to do that.
Do we have a council member that would like to do that? Would that be an option, Mr. Mayor pro temp?
Say that again, please.
Sarah said she's not able. Do we have a council, and I'm, it's not me, I'm a nurse, not a, anything else. So, but do we have a council member that would be able to do that in the morning? Is that even possible?
It, it's not advisable to have a council member perform administrative work or employee work because that's outside of your scope of practice.
Certainly outside of mine, but I think it's very important that we get this out immediately.
It could go in the 26th, on Thursday, the 26th. Sarah can get it to them within the next week. And then you look at the calendar, we need to, we need the proposals back. I'd say I'm back by the 18th of October. Believe that's, you know, she's looking, okay, that's what I'm trying to look at my calendar, 20, the next meeting would be the 21st, I believe, of October.
Yes.
Okay, then. Um, whoa. We would like to direct then, our town clerk, to get a posting in the Times, Gunnison Times, for Thursday, for RFPs.
How many weeks would you like it to run?
How many weeks would we like this to run?
Subperson, Thursday, the 26th. Is that, is that what you have?
Yes.
And it could run the 26th, it could run the 3rd, October 3rd. It can run October 10th too, but we need, we need all of them back by.
Well, our next meeting, we got to have them back by our next meeting and that's.
Then we close it like on the 16th of October. That's a Wednesday. And it's, it's posted for three weeks, which is ample time. I'd be okay with two weeks.
So our clerk is used to posting and used to requirements and used to timeframes. What is your thought on this?
We can certainly have it posted by the 26th. I think probably two weeks is enough, but the board can decide what it likes.
I'd be happy if it was two weeks.
I'm fine with two weeks. Ramon says it is indifferent to him whether it's two or three. So, all right, let's plan on two weeks then. Okay, Jesse, I see you standing up there. Do you have something you wish to say on this subject?
Certainly do. Mayor slash mayor pro temp or his designate can do about anything you guys ask to do, especially the mayor has to do. You and or your designate could put that in by noon tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Okay, I see Pete has his hand up here. Pete, why don't you come give us your thoughts on this?
If you do, when you do a, an RFP, I think you need to include a couple of things. Several years ago, when we did do that, through that snow pile committee, I think, we indicated that the personal business proposing service should identify their redundancy capabilities in the event, in the event of equipment failure. I think we also had, this is going to be maybe a challenge with the attorney, indication of minimum liability insurance, all of those things, if you check out.
Thank you, Ed. Redundancy ability and insurance.
You're welcome.
Hey, the clerk would prefer not to ask this question, but I'd like to ask if people who are online are able to hear.
Yes.
Well, okay.
Hello. This is Bob Nudelman. I'd like to make a comment.
I didn't understand.
Yes, this is Bob Nudelman. I'd like to make a comment. I, I think you may have, and I underline just the word may, have legal problems since that bid number has been already released and now you're issuing an RFP. I strongly suggest you contact your lawyer to make sure that you are not getting yourself into legal problems by doing this. Thank you.
I thank you, Mr. Nudelman. That was one of my concerns and I brought it up. We already have a price out there and now we're inviting other bids, so they know what their competitor is able to do. Seems a little bit off sided. Rachel.
Hi, my name is Rachel Newey. Thank you all for your time. Also, just following Mr. Nudelman's comment, I would be curious if you're going to, you've already tackled the agenda item and it is voted down, but you're now making a decision or potentially to do something that might not fall under that agenda item, I don't know. And if you were to do so and it did indicate we have trouble, you would have not had the backup of having it on the agenda. So I don't know if you would consider this discussion, something you would, would be approvable under that, unkind of out of practice. But I did have a question. Did I, did I articulate my concern well?
You know, I'd like for you to run through that one more time.
So my concern, like I said, I'm a little out of practice and I do, I want expedience. I'm not trying to throw a wrench, but we, we voted and the motion was denied for the agenda item to approve the contract with Gunnison Valley Excavation. And now the discussion is to send out an RFP, but that's not on the agenda for discussion or vote. And I didn't know if you need to do that or it can be considered something you discuss and put out without a vote of the trustees. If you did get in trouble, and this is a hypothetical, of course, we don't know the answer yet either, but if, because the bid's already gone out, you would like to have the correct procedure behind doing that. If it's safe, but I just wanted to ask you checking to your procedure.
Thank you, Rachel. Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
This is a problem with not having our attorney present tonight. I had no idea that attorney was not going to be at least on Zoom and I've never met him. And I knew I would be interested in his opinion, so maybe we have to have a special meeting or something. I, I don't know, but that's us in a situation.
So at this point then, are you suggesting that we backpedal and have a special meeting here in a couple of days and try this again? I, uh.
I, I don't know. I, I'm not that knowledgeable to know exactly what kind of conundrum we're in.
Well, this seemed like a conundrum to me, despite the fact that you want to be fair and transparent. With already having gotten this far and already having a contract lined up, you are putting this IGA with Gunnison County Snowplowing in a very difficult position because they've already disclosed their bid.
Is that public information?
Yes.
Yes, it is.
Yes, it, it's posted on the website and it was sent to all trustees, so it's, it's very public.
Well, I really don't like this. I think we're better off with our attorney's suggestion that if it's not required and that we go with it and we follow Jero's admonition that we make sure we get this right next year.
That's already been voted down.
I know it.
So the, the best case scenario, and I hate, I hate to say this, to go this route, but to put it on the November, excuse me, the October agenda to discuss and vote on an RFP, put the RFP out for snow plowing and then we follow the same timeline, but then we have to vote on it in November. And everybody better pray that we don't get a big snowstorm the first part of November or we're going to have some people out there with.
And, and you're, you're going to suggest this despite the counsel from our attorney that we didn't have to do this?
I think for transparency for the public, you put it out for RFP. You don't, what appears to be blindsiding people and, and just throw it on the agenda to discuss and vote on that one item. The item should have been discussed and possible action on RFP slash the contract for Gunnison Valley. I didn't write the agenda.
No, nor did we get a, send out any RFPs because we have not had anybody interested for the last couple of years. And so it was outside of our thought box. So I don't see that as.
Just, just seems odd that we put it out for, an RFP out for the ditches, but we wouldn't do the same thing for snow plowing.
Well, I understand that, Ed. Yes, ma'am.
So again, maybe you're not familiar with this term, but this is a single source contract.
I understand that.
Okay, well, ditches is not, that was a new thing that the town contracted out for the first time. So that was new and different and that's why a, an RFP went out for ditches. And that's the reason why an RFP did not go out for snow plowing. I think the last time we put an RFP out for snow plowing was probably for the 2021 season and thereafter, our streets commissioner took the responsibility of negotiating the contract and the terms. And then they would present us with the contract year after year. And I, I, I am unclear as to how the town was supposed to be aware that there were additional people who were interested in bidding without those people having notified the town. It would have been very easy to do an RFP at a time that was appropriate prior to when we negotiated a contract with a snow plowing company, which they sent over for a signature.
Thanks for the RFP.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Nassau, I see you looking.
Question if there was a change in the bid this year over last year.
There was no change in the bid. They kept the same price of last year.
Are we lining up back there? Go ahead, Jake.
So the ditches were done the previous year and an invoice was received by the town. And then this past year, the town council felt maybe they were cheated. So they decided to do an RFP when they realized that they paid double per foot than they were charged the year before by a local resident. So I believe it was made very clear by the former mayor that all these types of items should go out for bid. I think it's quite underhanded by the trustees. to take this responsibility of our tax dollars in their own hands and just willy-nilly hand out the money to whom they please. It's very simple to put out an RFP request. It's not my responsibility to reach out to the town and say, "I'd like to bid". No, you're required to put out the RFP. Well, technically, I guess you're not, so the rules change from one occasion to the other. And I guess now it's our responsibility to keep up with which rule you're going to decide to follow.
Another question. Can you please state your name? Taylor Adams. Um, earlier you had said that Phil George reached out to you, but then you weren't able to give them more information because we already had a contract. But you had just said you weren't sure how the town was supposed to know if somebody wanted to unless they reached out, but somebody didn't. And you moved to my head. Street minds, are you seeing?
Okay, well, we're in a spot. We have denied approving the contract that was sent over for signature. However, as it is not on our agenda items to work on when this will be posted. So I guess my question is regarding agenda items. And listening to comments here, and not knowing for sure myself. So are we going to then put this posting off till October? Or post it ahead of time and then have this on the October agenda? What is our process here? Sarah, do you know?
I don't have a definitive answer. I think probably consulting the attorney would be the best course of acting here.
Okay, so we're going to have to consult attorney and do a special meeting here to figure out what we're gonna do about item nine dash four.
And I'd like to see that done post haste, please, myself. I'll have to phone in or Zoom in or something, though.
Okay. Well, I suppose at this time, we might as well just say, when would you like to have a meeting? How soon can we contact our attorney?
Well, I can contact him anytime. If you want him present at the meeting, next week, except Monday.
So he's not available at all this week?
So Monday's as soon as we can have a...
No, Tuesday next week.
Tuesday.
Correct.
What? I'm sorry, what's that date?
Tuesday, the 24th.
It will have to be in the evening.
I'm sorry, say what?
It will have to be in the evening. I meant jury duty.
So Tuesday, the 24th, you have to have it in the evening. And Jerro, you could do this by Zoom anytime, you think?
I, if it's in the evening, it would be better.
Mr. Reed, when would you be available Tuesday?
24th is what you suggested. I can make that.
Hmm, say again. A little louder.
I can make the 24th.
You can.
Yes. I have a a question, I mean, you're putting this off and putting it off. It can snow anytime.
Well, I understand that.
You know, I also worry that the contractor that we have now, they withdraw it totally. And that the consideration is whether it's the 24th or the end of October or November, we're still gonna have it before the end of April. And if we can't start making decisions for the benefit of this town, we better ask ourselves, what the heck are we doing here? I mean, I think there'll be a a reasonable proposal on the table, and putting it off actually threatens that possibility of not having any snow power in the area. Are you people willing to take that chance?
Well, we have half the board that is, and as you say, we are split. So we work with what we've got. What time in the evening, Mr. Pinaldo?
I would presume that I'd be back at six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Okay. Can we do six on two?
I can do six thirty.
Six thirty? So would you check with our attorney and see if we can pull that together and send out appropriate information to the trustees? Is that agreeable with everyone here? All right, then that's what we will do. Okay. So I have two things that were brought up that I'm going to give an opportunity to talk about briefly. And the first one was brought up here, and I don't know if I could do a public service announcement. So this is the Pittkin Volunteer Fire Department. Needs your help to research, needs your help to research and file grants. And this is September 19, 2024, 9:00 a.m. for all you early risers. And the location is to be determined, but will be in Pittkin. Is there anything you would like to add to this? No. Okay, so we will post this. We have sign-up sheets. And, um, so I'm going to throw that out as a public service announcement. Also, in the venue of public service, Mr. Reed has this evening received a phone call from Century. I'm sorry. Anyway, Mr. Reed, if you would be quick with your, um, report.
I received a phone call from a resident of the town who currently has CenturyLink landline service and DSL service. They have received the letter, and I wouldn't mind seeing a show of hands if anyone else has, but this is the first I've heard of it. They received a letter from CenturyLink that their DSL service will be discontinued as of October 31st. Hear me. CenturyLink operates as part under the TUC. And actually, it's not CenturyLink anymore. It's now Lumen. Who bought CenturyLink? The CenturyLink business is still under Ken, but it's a whole different company. And I'm very concerned that we could lose our telephone service, our landline service altogether. Essentially, they're required to provide it by the TUC, but there are exceptions in that. And the attitude that we have gotten from them in the past has been they're not interested in Pittkin business. They will not upgrade any equipment. Getting repairs, as most people know, is in spite. And we, because I don't know why, maybe Sarah can explain this. The, the requests for an easement to repair the phone line and bury it in the street, on State Street, up between 11th and 12th.
Okay, okay. Ramon, I'm gonna
Put on the agenda.
I'm gonna cut you off there, and this looks like this needs to go on our special meeting agenda here coming up Thursday.
Whatever you want. I just don't want to take one more step to basically cut things off. And that's the direction we're headed.
Right. We're not gonna deal with it tonight. We'll get you on Thursday, and, um, and we'll include that. Okay, moving on, we have, uh, is it possible to switch these two in their order?
Um, what about the Gunnison County?
Did I miss? Oh, I'm sorry. Nine dash four coming up. I've been writing on my paper here and scratched right over that. Okay, nine dash four, discussed with possible action, approving an IGA with Gunnison County for snowplowing for the 24, 25 season. Now, this one's not gonna be quite as tough, guys. Uh, we didn't put out a RFP with the county. We are dependent on the county. So we've got that contract over here. Got it somewhere. So is there any discussion on the board about this?
This is, this is the same contract with the county as previous years.
Is there? Okay. County of Gunnison, State of Colorado. Okay, any discussion on this? Yeah, I was looking. Any public comments on our county snowplowing agreement? Okay. Oh, Ed, I'm sorry. Jake thinks he has a comment.
Uh, more so a question. Can you fill us in on uh, what the total cost is annually that we pay the county? I know there's like some
Yeah, there is a formula that comes out of multiple different places. And I don't know at this time what that is.
And no one knows what that is?
I don't.
All that information is online.
Oh, there you go.
If someone has access online, you don't know what it is?
No, I don't have it talking in my head now.
Can you email that to me?
Sure, if you would send me an email to remind me, I'd be happy to do that.
Any other comments? We don't like to do questions, per se, from the public comment board. It's basically the same, guys.
Motion?
I think we're ready for a motion.
This is Ed. I moved, approved the IGA with Gunnison County for snowplowing 2024, 25 season.
Mr. Jerome, second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the intergovernmental agreement for winter road maintenance by Gunnison County, State of Colorado. All those in favor, say aye.
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 All right, that motion will carry. So we have a plethora of machines that might be coming this way. I'm always surprised to see what comes up the road. Okay, so my questions are on the nine, five, and then the five, nine, two that are coming up. Can I switch those?
I believe so, and the board may want to have input on that, but I believe that that's possible, and wanting both items remain on the agenda.
Okay. So we're going to switch nine, five, and five, nine. Uh, I will read them, so that you'll know what we're switching. Nine, five says, discuss with possible action, approving a removal plan for posting the traffic pattern on Porch Lane. And five, nine, um, this was tabled from August, discuss with possible action responding to zoning board recommendation on a fence permit appeal for 428 State Street. Zoning board recommendations. Approve a fence permit with a five-foot setback from the property pin, or grant a land swap as originally requested. So we're gonna start with five, nine. Your comments.
So this is Ed. At the last meeting, it was decided or determined that Ed Herman and myself would go over to the property to look at the property, to give some facts, and that's what I have tonight, to give some facts and some possible options. So what I'd like to do, if it's okay with the board, is to plug into the big screen all of the presentation that I have was provided to everyone, and then there's also have enough hands. Also have available for the board to look at.
Larger plans.
Larger plans. Same thing as in the presentation. Uh, assuming.
All right, how quick's it gonna take? Can you plug right into that quick, quick? You practiced this and can do that?
Been, I did it the other day.
All right.
It actually worked.
So this will be, um, Ed Pianato's, uh, our zoning board, zoning board. Yeah, he's on both. Our Board of Trustees' comment on this, discuss with possible action on this section. Might be entertaining. All right, so I don't know that you'll be able to see all of the all of the drawings. I'll point them out with a pointer as I go. And it should go to the slideshow.
I'll see the bathroom. Were you saying he has represented zoning board, or at your request, it was council?
No, this was
From the council.
The trustees sent them down.
I was heading to the bathroom, and I heard something about zoning.
Okay, so survey the front desk, you can change this, survey of this street, Porch Lane lots one, two, and three. Oh, it doesn't work on.
I tried to.
Huh?
It did try to.
Oh, we gotta squeeze go to the TV. So lots one, two, and three. So you see, this is fish street coming down, Porch Lane, coming from. coming from. The family take that and simply blow it up. So lots one, two, and three, there's a blue dash line, just keep in mind the blue dash line that I'm gonna show you on several pictures, is gonna be the existing boundary as it is today. This existing boundary certainly is the dark line that I've moved that slide around there. I believe when Chad Barnell spoke at the last meeting, his idea was to go from this pin back I believe five feet, and then come out to this pin from here to here is fourteen feet. That is a nice straight line, the curved line in the grass is illustrated here. And then the traffic pattern has been here. So I will tell you, in Mr. Barnell's proposal of taking this area and doing a land swap would add six and a half feet to the Fifth Street property line. And I'll show you some other illustrations here in a little bit, that that six and a half feet allows them thirty and a half feet to propose property line to the edge of Fifth Street, the driving surface, surface, which is plenty of lot, plenty of space. So the red lines to go through this is gonna be the proposed property line for a land swap. Now, let's look at the root cause of the problem. The root cause of the problem is a tree. It's a beautiful Douglas fir tree, sitting one hundred percent in town property. You come right down this property line, you can see that the tree is actually two feet in Fifth Street from the property line. What has caused this whole issue is over the years that tree has grown, the canopy of the branches have gotten larger and larger and have extended over into the town right of way, causing people to drive across private property. So looking at this, where this tree is actually in town property, it's in no way is on any private property at all. And looking at this, I believe the town bears some responsibility for not maintaining the tree over the last thirty years so the traffic pattern wouldn't be disturbed. So, I take you to the next slide. You can see from a satellite image, the blue property line is right here. There's a zero setback on the well on the Barnell's property. So the front of that well house is right on property line, that property line comes all the way straight through into the Gibbs. The property line in roadway, the original property line is the blue line here. You can even see from the shadow of the tree, the tree is in Fifth Street, which is actually from here, there over to the edge of the picture. And I know there's some concern about well is Google satellite actor. Here's an onyx satellite image showing the exact same thing of the line coming right down here, you can see the tree there. You can also see, just for reference, this is where the town right of way should be. And I know the Gibbs parked their suburban in front of their house, which is actually in the town right of it's in the traffic pattern. So over time, for people going around the tree, which I understand what they did, it has moved the traffic pattern over. So I went out, when Ed and I went and looked at this uh the other day, a couple weeks ago, we took the measurements, went back last week, and I actually put lines on the road so you can see the property line. The blue property line again is the existing boundary, it comes from right at this point, where the birdhouse pole is, follows down here, and the property line is essentially where my pointer is there. Don't believe, don't think that the flag right there is the property line, because that flag actually says an offset of I believe it's two feet on that, which means the property line is right out here, that's where the pin is. So looking down from this pin, if you try to draw a straight line, this, from this pin over here to the red line on the grass is fourteen feet. I actually, I mean, I was looking at it, Ed and I both looked at it, thought, well, what if we try to bring that line back to the grass line? Well, when you extend the property line out this way off of Fifth Street, it then brings it out further here, and it doesn't resolve the issue. You still have a traffic pattern, it's still going on private property. So the fourteen feet here, and I believe it's the five feet at the back end, uh, gives us probably the best scenario of square footage to do the land swap there. So the fourteen feet here and the five feet from the property pin in here gives the best scenario of the square footage of the area, which is uh seven hundred and twelve and a half square feet. The, if we did a land swap, would come over on Fifth Street, it's six and a half feet off the six, off of the, the boundary line on Sixth Street, I'll show you that in the upcoming slide. So just for reference, so everybody's on the same page, fourteen feet, you had this in digital form, that is actually showing fourteen feet right at that apartment, just sort of those square foot, or the measure. So that's fourteen feet. Looking upstream, again, the blue dash line is the original boundary, the proposed is then coming over five feet to where Stella is sitting out there with the dog shit. So there's the pin on the edge of the, of the road. So, the proposed distance is five feet from that pin in. And again, it's the tape measure there so you can see, five feet. So then, wanted to show if the boundary was moved to Fifth Street from the current boundary to Fifth Street is thirty seven feet to the edge of the road. Yep, there was a land swap. It would go to thirty and a half feet. And you can look right down the road there, where the tape measure laid, it's thirty seven feet to the edge of the grass line. So there's plenty of room, from what I can see and what Ed Herman could see, if we did a land swap to six and a half feet wide, that we'd have plenty of room. So we kind of looked at everything, trying to look at it, and then I just say, okay, what are some options besides trying to take someone's property away from it, so option A, I know is not a very popular option, and that's the removal of a beautiful Douglas fir. I will say, I do, I, that's the last thing I wanted to do, is take down a beautiful tree. But we're trying to look at some options or some pros and cons of taking the tree out. The pros are that all the boundaries stay the same, the road goes right back to where it should be, the boundaries stay the same, no one gains any property, nobody loses any property. Traffic can resume right on the plotted street like it should be, Porch Lane remains fifteen feet wide, easements five feet on both sides. The cons to it is we lose a mature Douglas fir. It's, it's gonna cost the town substantial amount of money to remove that tree, because it is real close to two different property lines, it's real close to the Gibbs' house. So I don't think the town is in a position to say, well, you go over and cut that tree down, it's gonna have to be a license, tree removal company, it's gonna be expensive to do that. However, the cons of that is the Gibbs still will not be able to park their vehicle in front of their garage like they haven't been doing, because it is about half that vehicle is out in the traffic pattern where it currently is. So is this the perfect option? So I, I don't believe it is, but it is an option. So the other option is to do a land swap. To take the fourteen feet at one end, five feet at the other end, comes out to seven hundred and twelve and a half square feet. If you divide that into two, the hundred and twenty five feet of the length of the uh property on Fifth Street is six point four feet, actually, not six point five, six point four, roughly six and a half feet that you would put to the property on Fifth Street. So some pros to doing that. The mature tree stays where it is, the branches still need to be trimmed up, at least so they have clearance if a, if a tall vehicle goes under it, so they don't hit the, hit a vehicle, they don't break out a window. The Gibbs, Joe Science, Eric, can still park their vehicle against the garage, and it wouldn't be specifically in town right of, or the, the uh traffic pattern. It fixes the setback of the well house, it's a zero setback today. We make that beyond the five feet setback. Uh, thirty and a half feet between new property line, Fifth Street Drive surface, which is ample space, there's zero cops to the town. It eliminates issues of curved drive surface on Porch Lane, Fifth Street, across private property. There still would be the same curve, because that's on Fifth Street. So the traffic pattern really doesn't change at all. The cons is, and this would be a question for the town attorney, the possible con could be if the tree stays, and it's on town right of way, does that put the town a liability risk with that tree right there? What's that?
Only if it's hit.
Yeah, only if it's hit, or lightning hits it, or something like that, I, I, I don't know, it may not propose a liability, I don't know, it's a possible. But when you look at the pros and cons of doing a land swap, I think the pros greatly outweigh either option A or option B. And then the last option that's not on there on the slide is that we proceed with a the road's on town right of way, and the town tries to take property away from a property. So with that, that is the last slide, unless there's any question?
One comment, we have a lot of trees on city right of way. And I think we covered that before I asked you, the insurance company doesn't care. Is that correct?
I, I don't know, that, that's a question for the town attorney, I can't answer. All right. So with that, that's the, that's the fact finding issue. It's a possible option. Everybody get a look at these? Yes, I got a good look at those. Not actually those, but other ones, your, your pictures looked up good on the computer. All right, are you done? All right. So um sometime, at the last meeting, I think Chad Barnell got up and talked about Pittkin, Pittkin is historical, Pittkin has been here, Pittkin is still here, and Pittkin will continue to be there. And uh Mr. Pianato has also stated that he thought Pittkin needed a plan. So I have something I'm gonna stick in front of you, and you have all seen this before, because this is just excerpts from minutes. It's real easy. And if you object to that, why, you can just take it back and read it. So here we go. You all remember this, or at least somebody will. Ed, how tough was it down there measuring out all this stuff?
Fifteen feet.
Okay, yeah. Okay, two nineteen, that's February nineteen of twenty twenty four, the Pittkin Town Meeting, you will find on page three, item eleven four. Based on the advice from our attorney, and these are right out of the minutes. Mayor Balt stated that the pound of Pittkin is not interested in a land swap, and there will be no further discussion on this either. Well, of course, that didn't happen, there has been further discussion. So sometime after that, why, a uh building inspector denial of Chad Barnell and Starlene Barnell's fence permit. And that was denied with the you cannot put a fence in the public right of way. And I included in here that Colorado statute was not cited on that permit. On April eight, at the zoning board meeting, the motion to grant this appeal in favor of the applicant with the approval of the city attorney was made by Chairperson Jared Erickson. I'm sorry, Jesse Garretson. This is the zoning board meeting, all right, let me start it. Zoning board meeting, motion to grant this appeal in favor of the applicant with the approval of the city attorney was made by Chairperson Jesse Garretson. Thank you, Jared, no second, motion died. Motion to recommend to the Board of Trustees to approve the permit in regards to the five foot setback from the pins or approve the previously requested land swap, one or the other, was made by zoning board member Ed Pianato and was seconded by Chairperson Jesse Garretson, and the motion carried three to one. Zoning board member Roger Lull abstained, and Daley Gett voted no. So we're gonna move along here. April fifteenth, town meeting. Item number five under updates. Attorney Buckner stated, it's a clear town right of way. That's the end of the analysis legally. That road's been there, not away for years, it's been there long enough, that by statute it becomes a clear town right of way. May twentieth, the town meeting. Zoning board chairperson Ed Pianato addressed the board with a review of the recommendation, and I skipped a few words there, that were presented to the town. And Mayor Balt asked Attorney Buckner, Buckner, about the fence being built in the town right of way. And Attorney Buckner stated, and this is the last sentence there of his statement, he would never suggest to any town to give up property or to change ditches, easements, or roads, or the establishment, or the established thoroughfare for the town. June sixteen, Pittkin Town Meeting, item five nine, Attorney Buckner stated, as Pittkin grows and progresses, this is important, this is the future of Pittkin, as Pittkin grows and progresses, there will be more utilities, more buildings, more infrastructure, and it is not advisable to start giving away property. We are talking about well-established roads, several decades established, and there is no reason legally to give up property that has been maintained and dedicated as a right of way for that long, the law doesn't support it, and it's a dangerous precedent, precedent. We move to the same page of those minutes, next page of those minutes. As far as just black and white goes, the right of way is established. This isn't a gray area of law. Existing statutory and case law supports the town's position that it is in control of the property and the current right of way. Move to the next page where he's still running on. He is wholly against the town spending money on this. The town wouldn't even be considering this if the property owner hadn't suggested a land swap be done. Now pay attention here. As the Board of Trustees, your responsibility is to the town as a whole and to safeguard and make decisions that consider the entire town and not just individual property owners. It is not the town's responsibility to pay money for something that we already know. That was in reference to surveys. It's not the town's responsibility to pay for this or fix it for a single property owner, especially when the right of way has been established arguably for seventy-five years. August meeting. Town and Pittkin meeting. Attorney Bookner stated, if a land swap, and I quoted the whole thing here, we'll get to the end of it. If a land swap or dismissing a land swap or allowing a family member to increase land value or land volume, well, that could be a conflict. From the drawings he's seeing, it's not happening this way. He sees a current violation of state statute and town ordinance by the homeowner. He suggests the homeowner remove the obstructions in the road to start and then have a conversation about how to make that right. And then if you will turn the page, you want to read the memorandum from Clay Bookner, Town Attorney, to the Pittkin Board of Trustees regarding the right of way and Quirks Lane. And I would go to item three because we can skip. Bottom line upfront, Quirks Lane is an established town right of way and should not be relocated. Item four. The town holds right of way rights in fee, and you might have to look that up in case you don't know. But, you know, legal language. And maintains authority to regulate how and when it may be used by members of the public or public and private entities and in quote CRS forty-three two dash two oh one that states the following are declared public highways. All roads over private land that have been used adversely without interruption or objection on the part owners of such lands for twenty consecutive years. And case law establishes that easements by prior use or by distributive or adverse possession are effective after eighteen years. Move on down to number five there, about the hmm couple sentences down. He goes on to state that the width of the right of way is not limited to degraded or maintained portion of the right of way. And he goes on to explain that. And then we get down to the bottom line of that item five. Conjecture aside, and in any case, the road has been established for well over fifty years for seventy-five and thus Quirks Lane right of way is a public highway under Colorado State Statute or has, or at least has become town right of way by prescription. In other words, folks, this road has been there long enough. It's been through multiple owners and the last owner had a survey and said, whoops, I got a road on my property. Well, yeah, you do. You got a road right across it and you see this all over the place out in the countryside and hills. And this state law has been in effect since the eighteen hundreds in some variation, way, shape or form because people have to cross private property to get from one place to another. And the state had to make laws about that. And this falls under that statute. That road has been there long enough and you don't get to buy property and come along and change it. So I was a little surprised, perhaps I would say, when uh I received what Mr. Pianalto has presented here this evening. He has come up with two options and one is to uh give Mr. Barnell the land swap or cut down a tree. And neither one of those options is necessary. The road speaks for itself. It's been there long enough. It is public right of way within corporate limits of the town that makes it town right of way. You don't get to change it. So that's the attorney's legal assessment on this. And um to stand up there and say, well, you know, we're taking away this guy's property. Well, no, you're not. He saw it before he bought it. He looked at it before he bought it. He knew what he was buying and that's what he got. And uh then decided, well, now that I've got this survey, maybe I can just make it larger. But that's not how it works. You don't get to take over town right of way after so many years just because you purchased property. So with that being said, I'm going to say that by state statute, by Attorney Bookner's advice, by his extolling the state statutes and describing our position, that I am not at all in favor of this so-called land swap because it is not actually a land swap. You will be giving away some town property. And you will be interrupting. You'll be chunking out pieces of street in order to fulfill this. And in such time as infrastructure changes are required, you may not want that chunk out in the street. So I'm going to speak in opposition to this land swap. You have any comments? If I can make some back.
So first of all, I'd like to point out that you did not state that the town attorney did state at the last meeting that there are other solutions rather than just taking the, the property over.
Well, see, that's not taking property over because it is by state statute, already town property.
So we've heard over and over, people comment that this is Pittkin. Is there some way when it comes to a situation like this that we can try to work things out reasonably? Or are we just gonna take the leap of the stand to start taking pe- property away from people? And I believe that's when, when the attorney said, there are some other solutions. In fact, we asked him specifically about a land swap and he said, a land swap is a possibility the last meeting, that you felt within your pages here of quoting.
Well, I couldn't put them all in there.
So, so you.
No, and that last one you got there, that's the entirety of that one.
No, 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 I'm talking right back here, back on eight nineteen. He made the comment, because Jared asked the question, isn't there something else we can do? And he said, there are several other options that we could do. Well, land swap might be one of them. This town has done land swaps in the past. So there's no precedent being set by us doing a land swap. It, it land swap does not change anything about the town right of way. It doesn't change it at all. The road stays exactly where it's at.
It takes a chunk of town property off of Fifth Street.
So you want to take the, the town property off of Fifth Street, but the way you want to approach it legally is just taking town property from a private owner. I don't think.
It's, it's not taking property from a private owner. It never was his.
Yes, it was his. It was his. His peoples are marked there.
It has been town right of way. Whether it's across his property or not, you can phrase it however you want, but it is town right of way and he cannot put a fence in it. Okay. We're gonna quit there for a bit and uh I see we have a couple of people standing up here who want to weigh in. Marie Ross Miller.
I've been listening very carefully to what you have been reading there going back to April, uh whenever it is. And then I've been hearing what the attorney has responded. What obviously unlocked. And I don't like it one bit. Just to say that state statute says this or state statute says that and they don't re, they don't give the number of the legal numbers to do it. I mean, I'm in financial services. I have to be really careful about legal stuff. And if I'm going to say something, I want to be able to back it up. And they keep saying state statute say this state, and I would like that to be clarified. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Garretson.
Thank you, sir. Your report, your voice fluctuation was very biased. Very biased. You failed to say one time, the attorney said there's other options. And you even appointed a person and two persons and a third person, the owner, to go make measurements and make a modified recommendation through the council. This needs to be a win-win deal. Now Paul Harley, the rest of the story. This town is not through. We have other problems in this town that go both ways. This is not giving away city property. There is an identical square footage swamp. Everybody wins, right down to your son and daughter-in-law's front driveway parking area. Be careful how you're trying to influence this whole town in your favor only.
You're welcome. Pino, please stand up.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My only comment is that you've got a challenging decision to make. But don't lose sight of the fact that there is a cost to whatever decision is made. And it should be determined as you make that decision, who will pay that cost. Thank you.
Roger Lowell.
Yes. The block and lots in Pittkin, Colorado have to remain in the shape that they are in to secure what they are inside of this square rectangular thing we call Pittkin, Colorado. If you look carefully at a Pittkin map, you will see that the entire edges of this layout is triangles. You ever wonder what those triangles sizes were? There's no description of it. The only thing that has a legal description in this town are the lots and blocks. All those triangles are whatever a surveyor decides they are after measuring and allowing for all the description of the lots of blocks and how they lay out. Now you'll also notice that none of the streets go north and south. None of the lots and blocks laying out properly with the side boundaries. Like I say, it's all triangles around all the end. So what does that mean? It, it means in the town, it's forty-seven feet longer than it was supposed to be. And it's because they said, you know, the side boundaries, we're not even going to give a description to. They're gonna be what they are. We're gonna make the town forty-seven feet longer so that we can push things around in the town. But we, the integrity that is legal descrip, that has a legal description lots of blocks. So my only concern is if you modify lots and blocks and you start doing this and there's a lot of reasons for it. We got a lot of lots falling into horseback. We're gonna compensate them. They lost property to the creek. We have roads that fall into the creek, don't go anywhere. We don't have near enough bridges. We, we have a lot of problems here, but I think you give the surveyors in this town, uh, you know, it's challenging enough to try to figure out what they want, you know, the way the town is laid out. And if you own one of those triangles like I do around the town, yeah, you get what's left after they measure on that end. Yeah, and it's really hard to lay out a proper, you know, survey thing because they're, they don't fit into the proper description of twenty-five feet wide by a hundred and twenty-five feet long. So I wouldn't mess with any of the lots and blocks. I don't want, maybe you should make a longer, shorter mess room at all because that was the original purpose, lots and blocks, certain size. Thirty-two lots per block. You start messing with that, yeah, you're messing with the streets, you're messing with the alleys. But you're messing with the size of the lots and blocks. You just messed it up. You just messed up the system that this town was laid out in. I, I didn't, wasn't my purpose to make it that way. I understand why the original surveyors did this. I understand why the town is longer. This is allows the lots and blocks to kind of work out forty-seven feet for the discrepancies. But the lots and blocks themselves got to stay the size they are. Otherwise, the formula does not work. You just messed it up. You're gonna have to go back to every surveyor that's ever surveyed this town and say, oh, we've got a new deal going here. We're going to resurvey everything that we don't like. Give property to someone else. And uh, yeah, what are you giving away? Or whatever, you know. So reshaping these things doesn't make any sense uh unless you just want to continue this forever and it's gonna become a surveyor's nightmare.
Uh, they, in the corners, they take all their data.
All right, everybody, we're gonna take a three-minute break. If you need to use the bathroom or get up and stretch your legs, feel free to do so. You can just sit there. One comment per person. That what you're saying. Comment for person, is that what you're saying?
(Inaudible)
Yeah. Put a limit on the number of times you can get up and comment, guys. Make it good. All right, we've had a break, it is now, what time is that say, 10:53?
It's 8:50.
8:50, sir. That's what I meant. And we're back in session. All right, Jesse.
I'd like to comment a little bit on Roger's previous comments, and we stuck, (inaudible) planted lots, lots, the Connet Street, which makes a curve on State Street above Tent Street, would run right in front of the (inaudible). Now, look where that's used today, ties right in with the government, federal forest reserves road, course, uh, coming to pass. Our mountains and our creeks dictate traffic patterns. So there has to be some adjustments in order so we can function and reach our property in rest and rest. Legalism in the town is, we're family up here, we need each other, and almost two months ago, if I had to follow your (inaudible) reaction on shutting off the gates when we had a ditch overflow, would have been a disaster on the Sunday morning fire that we had with Todd Greenberg due to lack of water. This town needs each other, this town needs to bend and flex to keep everybody caring for each other. I am at loss of words to think that we don't want a win-win deal for the town and a private land owner. Thank you.
We're going to move this along here and take a vote directly, pretty quick, actually. Anybody else want to stand up and say something? Okay, we're going to cut off public comments, I will make one last reading here, because Ed said, "Well, I didn't include everything," and, uh, I did not include this, so I'll let Ed have a last go at this. This is from the June 17th town meeting, where Attorney Bookner says his advice. Okay, I want to back up. "This is not a Pickens-specific issue, insofar that the town is willing to do a variance or a land swap that doesn't set a bad precedent. He is not suggesting against it, his advice is wholly objective, based on the idea that someone can't just buy a piece of property, have it surveyed, and suggest that while someone else owned it, and they were fine with it the way everything was, but now I own it and want to extend my property into what is existing thoroughfare in exchange for something else, this has second and third degree order of effects that shouldn't be seriously considered." And that's my point tonight, second and third degree order of effects, and that's what happens when you start taking chunks off of Fifth Street to compensate someone who bought a piece of property that already had a road on it that's been there a long, long time. Now, one of the things Ed did not point out while he had those slides up, was take a look at the bridge, take a look at the topography, take away, take a look at the way that road has to swing wide if you're coming off the bridge in order to get onto Quartz Lane. It's a wide turn, and the turn on the other side coming in from the other direction, from State Street, is also a bit wide. Nevertheless, that road has been there for an extensive period of time, and being a new landowner does not entitle you to change town right of ways. I will rest my opinion.
So my, I might add to that, that if a land swap occurred, it doesn't change the town right of way, it makes that turn so more difficult than if the road is where it should have been with a tree that's in the property. It's a simple solution, maybe this board needs to have a little more heart and a less attack, think about that.
A little more heart and less what?
Attack.
Less attack. Thank you. Any other board comments?
Absolutely, thank you. There is absolutely no doubt here that the state statute, there is a state statute, absolutely, I understand prescriptive or adverse, uh, possession or easement. The statute now, the statute number is...
Forty-two dash two dash two oh one.
Thank you. It, it absolutely is a state statute for this prescriptive easement, it's the law, and there's no doubt about it. I was not, a, I was in the hospital, not able to be in the executive session, so I have no idea what went on in there, I tried to listen, and unfortunately, the batteries, I guess, had run out, so I have no idea what went on in there, I do know in open session, like you read, the attorney came, or Eddie came out and said, "There'll be no more discussion, there'll be no land swap." However, some of you who are in this room, I asked the attorney, I, I understand, this is state statute, no doubt, absolutely, I think we could go to court and absolutely win, I do. I do not think that is the proper way, I think there's a win-win solution, which I asked our attorney online, I've never met the man in person, unfortunately, and he did say, he absolut, I've read all of this that he wrote, he absolutely said, "We can find a win-win situation there," he, I mean, that's a quote, he said, "Yes, there is, there are options, and we could find a win-win situ, a win-win solution." I just don't understand why, and we may end up in court, no matter how this situation goes, but could, I, I, I do not understand the animosity, and to tell you the truth, when you buy property in this town, people, it is buyer beware, because this is paradise, we're, we're at the mount, with this wonderful, wonderful, wonderful valley, ever since the U Indians, even they knew it was wonderful, but it's buyer beware, and I'm not sure the buyers did their due diligence, I don't know, but I don't, but I don't know that, that's my business, I'm not saying that they are in the right at all, I think we have every right to claim this is ours, it's state statute, absolutely, we can say that, but I just don't understand when there's a win, in the, in the, in this instance, when there's a win-win sol- solution to this, why we're digging our heels in, and when the attorney even said, "There is a solution, a win-win solution." Thank you.
I, I'd just like to point out one thing that Jared said, is the executive session, uh, just as a point of, I guess, facts, in that executive session, Ramon and I were not on the board, so we've never been privy to that executive session.
Okay, folks, it's time to entertain a motion.
I want to go on record as to say, I think it's pathetic that we are at this point, and I know as a town council, we have, we're here, this is what we have to do, but there are other options besides, I'm just sorry we, but never, it ever came about.
The other thing I'd like to add on it is, I do believe, I've been talking to Chad when we were over there, Mark Measuring and Mark, that this, a land swap solution would fix the next agenda item, because his comment, and I think Star would vouch for this, his comment was that if the land swap was granted, he would take the birdhouse posts out of the town right of way.
All right, it's time for a motion, I would entertain a motion, do I need to make the motion? I'm not, uh, I'm not positive on this, so it shouldn't be me.
I make the motion that the board grants the land swap with, with the Barnells, 712 and a half feet, adding six and a half feet to the property boundary on Fifth Street, that leaves the town right of way where it's at, leaves everything where it's currently at, other than the land swap.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second, so all those in favor...
Could I have discussion again, since the second? I have a question.
Do we have discussion between a motion and a second? We can if we want to, okay.
And they vote, that's fine.
All right, we'll take a little discussion.
I just have a question, do you feel like it's okay for you to vote?
Absolutely.
That's my question.
I would like to request whether I could have a roll call vote.
A roll call vote, is anybody opposed to that? Okay, all right then, it is time to vote, so we will begin with Jared. Jared, the, uh, vote was to approve the land swap. As originally, do you trust?
Seven hundred and twelve feet.
For seven hundred and twelve feet. How do you vote, Jared?
To approve.
Jared votes to approve. Uh, I am against this, and I say no. Ramon? Okay, the land swap, the land swap is not approved.
I would like to go on record, may I, Mr. Mayor of Rhode Island?
I suppose you may, yes.
As saying that if the parties in this case were swapped, if the Gibbs, if the Gibbs family owned the Varnell property, and the Varnell prop, the, the Varnells owned the Gibbs, my vote would still be the same.
Thank you, I'm glad to hear it. All right, so the land swap is denied. Moving on to nine five, discuss with possible action, approving removal plan for post in the traffic pattern on Quartz Lane. So here's what I'm going to tell you. The posts in the traffic pattern on Quartz Lane are posts in a town right of way, they're obstructions in a town right of way, and it does not require most removal. So, at this point, I will say, um, and it is, I get to say to Mr. Varnell, get your posts that are in the right of way and on the adjacent right of ways, out of the ground and gone, and if they are not gone this week, we will have someone come, take them out.
Make a comment.
You may.
I think it would be just real nice if the Varnells just volunteered to do that.
I'm sorry.
(Inaudible)
Is that right? Okay, well, in that case, I could extend that timeframe, but it needs to be soon, they've been there long enough, and, uh, this issue is done. So, uh, Tuesday, Wednesday, what is today, Monday? Tuesday, I'll say Tuesday, you can get them out by Tuesday, or you can have someone else take them out for you. Okay, I think we've run long enough tonight. You can look at the different reports online, and, um, we're going to call this meeting over.
I want to talk about reports, at the last meeting, there were no complaints that were brought forward, I asked the, the mayor to report at that meeting, he said he didn't know about those complaints, that you would check into them, you like to address those complaints.
Um, I don't have that list with me, so, um, no, I will not be addressing those complaints, I did attend to, actually, I did attend to one complaint, um, as far as I know, it's the only one I got, and I did go look at it, and it was resolved. Um, if there was a bunch of them, I don't know, so...
You do know them, you got them as a board of trustee.
What can I say?
Failed to act on it, that's what you can say.
Or failed to see them, I don't know how that would have been, but it's possible. Okay, any other discussions from the board? All right then, thank you all for coming, this meeting's adjourned.